Welcome, everyone, to the Committee of the Whole meeting for June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four here at the SCR D. At first, I'd like to acknowledge that we live and play and work on the unceded ancestral lands of the Skohamish and the Seashell Nation. We have an agenda ahead of us in front of us. Is there any additions or omissions in this agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adopt. We have a motion, we have a secondar, all in favor. Very good. We have a we have an agenda in front of us, and we do have a presentation from Mr. Rob Ringma with B C Transit. Good morning, Mr. Ringma.
Good morning, Chair Backs, and good morning, Directors. Really appreciate the opportunity to be not back on Sunshine Coast, but presenting to the Sunshine Coast. I will just bring up my presentation. Just if somebody could verbally let me know if you can see that presentation on the screen.
Yeah, we can see it in the, in the, yeah, now it's full screen. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Excellent. So, yeah, great, great to be back here again to talk a little bit about transit services and expansion priorities on the Sunshine Coast. What I thought I would just quickly do, go through some ridership and operations data analysis. I'll talk a little bit about Transit Planning one oh one. I'll talk about the Transit Future Action Plan as it relates to kind of our expansion initiatives and just some of the revisions or changes we've made after analyzing a lot of the data, and we're getting some really great data coming in. So, you know, good to talk about that and some of those revised priorities. And then obviously, open to take questions at the end. I know there is a staff report and some recommendations at the end that I'm sure you guys will will manage from the board perspective. And I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can, knowing that there's quite, quite meaty kind of topics to get through. So, again, just maybe questions at the end, we'll be able to take those. So this first slide here, what you can see is just kind of ridership by quarter and by route from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty four. And what you'll notice here is just that kind of continual rise after the dip in COVID. And, you know, pretty strong performance, I would have to say. You know, we are pretty much provincially back to pre-COVID levels. I think you'll hear me stop talking about ridership recovery and just, you know, referring to ridership growth and continued growth. And that's kind of what we're seeing in the Sunshine Coast transit systems. We're seeing that return of ridership. We're seeing that growth. And as you can see here, and I'll get into a little more detail, but on the Route ninety, the Route two, we're definitely seeing a pretty brisk return and increases in in volume. Something else that was kind of interesting is, if you see this slide here, the the lower red line was kind of two thousand and twenty two kind of ridership throughout the day. You'll notice how flat that is. And we really found across the province, ridership flattened out over COVID. And mainly, that's just because people weren't either traveling to work. Some people weren't going to school. There was a lot of different factors that varied in there. But what we've seen as that ridership has returned, we're seeing that return to those rush hour peaks. Which, you know, you can kind of look at the time, but they they correlate with the school times and they correlate with commuter times. Kind of that seven to nine thirty in the morning and two thirty to four thirty in the afternoon. So, you know, just thinking about this from a data perspective, we really need to make sure that we have the capacity and frequency on the road at these times to avoid any capacity issues, any pass-ups. And particularly in light of the fact that the district is moving ahead with free fares for eighteen under in September, it's just a really key consideration when we think about transit investment and where we want to ensure we're putting some of our resources. I would assume these bumps will only go higher by offering free transit to to youth and students eighteen and under. So looking at kind of daily boardings, this really just basically is average daily boardings by route kind of over the last three years. So you see the frequent transit routes, the Route one and the Route ninety on the kind of outsides. And you'll see the local transit routes, the two, three, and four in the middle. You do see kind of that continued increase. You know, low local routes are still increasing, but you can see that the number one and the number ninety remain kind of the workhorses of the system with the number Route ninety seeing really continued sustained growth. Sorry. So, you know, it's really key to see these, but the other piece that I would I would highlight is just the number two, the Route two. And you can see it's starting to grow in terms of its ridership and and capacity over the over the last three years. So that was kind of absolute ridership. What we also look at is we look at ridership productivity. I'm just gonna go back to the slide. We know that we have a lot of hours allocated and scheduled for the Route one and the Route ninety and less so for the Routes two, three, and four. So ridership productivity really kind of breaks away those those hours and says, okay, how many rides per hour are we seeing in each system? It kind of a, it's a unifying metric that kind of takes some of the some of those hour increases out of out of play. So when we see that, what you actually see, and you'll notice the Route two, you know, jumps up in terms of its ridership productivity. So we're seeing on the Route ninety and the Route two, based on the number of service hours that we have allocated to each of those routes, they're almost performing at the same productivity. Almost twenty five rides per hour. So that there really just kind of tells you that when we're getting into transit planning, that as we get the higher ridership productivity, you might start to run into pass-ups, you might start to run into some capacity issues. So we need to look at those things in terms of investment. And you'll kind of see that through through some of the data. So again, we need to examine that closer and make sure that all of our future investment needs are kind of aligned to some of that, some of that growth. So this one here is performance by quarter. So again, you have all of the routes on the left. You'll see the average boarding per revenue hour. So this first slide here is two thousand and twenty. And then here you'll see two thousand and twenty three, twenty four. And what I've tried to highlight here is just some of the major increases that we've seen. So this is from two thousand and twenty to the past year. We've seen the Route ninety double in productivity from fifteen rides per hour to twenty eight rides per hour. So again, key, key statistic that we need to be aware of. I've talked a little bit about the Route two. We've seen the Route two increase from nine boardings per hour to twenty. So that's more than doubled. And also, the Route one has increased quite significantly from nine and a half rides to sixteen point nine. And then the other interesting stat is when we look at days of the week and our performance by day of the week, we actually see that the Route ninety is is performing very, very strongly on weekends. And to be quite honest, we're probably getting at almost critical levels on on some of our weekends. Now, we think some of that data, because we've seen the increase in the Route one, we're we're pretty confident that, you know, through kind of analyzing the data and also talking to staff, that we are seeing some of that overflow demand being absorbed by the Route one. But it is clear that, you know, on our weekends, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing sustained ridership. So we need to be thinking, again, with the Sunshine Coast, not just about weekly ridership, but also some of the weekend needs that we may have. On weekdays, what we're actually seeing, and this is kind of reflected in that other slide that I put put forth, was that on weekdays, the Route two is now the second most productive route. So Route ninety being the first and Route Route two being the second. So we need to, we need to take that into consideration. So just getting into some of the philosophy behind transit planning, I thought I'd use this slide to help kind of illustrate. So in order to build a long-term sustainable ridership within the system, we need to focus on the frequency and convenience of the system. That's that's where, you know, if we can increase the convenience, we can increase the frequency. That's where we actually see sustained long-term ridership growth or or mode shift away from alternative modes like single occupancy vehicles. So because of that, we give greater weight to transit priorities that typically, then you'll see the weighting kind of from left to right. But first, we focus on our operational needs. Do we have the on-time, do we have any on-time performance issues? How do we continually adjust for increased congestion on roads as communities grow and as, as, you know, we see even on Sunshine Coast weekends in the summer, when we see these these increases in terms of traffic? Then, secondly, we focus on performance data. So like some of the data that I just reviewed, are we reaching capacity on any current routes? Are we passing passengers up? Do we need to increase our frequencies to help support? Once we know our core service is running optimally, then we can start to layer in new priorities from our Transit Future Action Plan or any other local plans or initiatives that you have. So this is, this is kind of the the waiting that we use. And if I was gonna do it in a different way or just show kind of the same idea in a different way, I like I like to use this pyramid, which is similar to anybody who's into psychology, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This is the B C Transit hierarchy of transit needs. And in similar fashion, if the base of this pyramid is not strong, you can't build on it higher and and or put much weight on the higher tiers, or the whole pyramid will will actually crumble. So first and foremost, you need a safe, reliable base of transit service, solid on-time performance, well-distributed ridership productivity and sustained performance. Secondly, we want to make sure the system's efficient. It's well-utilized. Our buses are 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 well-utilized, but not not passing up people, and we're not overly crowding the buses. Then we can, once we can, we were at that stage, we can make sure the routes are optimized, we're forecasting growth and future needs of the system, and make sure that we're meeting all of our service guidelines and performance standards. And once we feel all of those pieces are functioning well, well, then we can start to layer in new service to new areas, new initiatives, and just kind of dive deeper into some of those future strategic priorities. And what we've kind of seen is from when we did our Transit Future Action Plan back in two thousand and twenty two, we're now here at two thousand and twenty four. Some of that data has changed. Some of the priorities have probably changed. We're seeing, you know, not great on-time performance as as congestion continues to to rise. We're seeing kind of our key routes, the ninety, the one, and the two, they all need additional support based on the ridership returns that we've seen. So, you know, we've, we've actually gone back and looked at our previous priorities in the Transit Future Action Plan and and worked with staff and obviously through some workshop with planners in the region and and the board, and come up with a bit of a revised plan. And this kind of speaks to that. So, you know, if I look at that weighting that I had showed before, and I look at what kind of the needs are in the system, what you see here really clearly, if I kind of start left to right, number one, our on-time performance, we're currently running below B C Transit SCR D standards on on-time performance. That impact is increasingly felt in the summertime when we get more traffic and congestion increases. Number two, we're seeing some challenges with capacity on the Route ninety, particularly on weekends, where we, again, as I mentioned, feel some passengers are moving over to the Route one. And then number three, the increase that we've seen in the Route two in terms of ridership and ridership productivity, you know, those need to be addressed as well as that route will continue to grow. So, you know, in essence, these initiatives are really crucial to that base pyramid of our transit system and making sure that that's really strong, so then we can layer in some of those additional, those additional priorities. So I've kind of outlined the the one, the one, two, and three, and just kind of the last comments I was making. The only thing I'll say here is then you see, after we address kind of one, two, and three, then we can look at the outstanding TFAP priorities, rank those where they need to be prioritized, and start to implement those in in the priorities as well. So I'll speak a little bit more to that. Just to remind everybody about our Transit Improvement Program, so affectionately called our Tips Process. This is what communicates those expansion initiatives proposed over the next three years. We present those, and and you'll see in your staff report, we've kind of presented the first cut of that with costing. So that, you know, this this board can look at those initiatives, can see some of the costing, and decide how they want to prioritize some of those, some of those functions. Again, B C Transit provides the data, the expertise and the advice, but ultimately, it is this board that makes the final decision on prioritization and sequencing of transit initiatives. And then that, once we've, once we do that, then we will present you later this summer with a fully costed a formal memorandum of understanding with those costs. You sign off on those costs, and then we take those and we go back to the province and we use that commitment from local government to try to secure the matching funding from the province. So in the report, I'm just gonna review what we currently have in in there in terms of sequencing. So what you'll see in year one, which is fiscal two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six, again, B C Transit working off a fiscal year. We've thrown in two thousand and seven hundred hours and one heavy-duty bus. Total cost of about half a million dollars, but of course, through the B C Transit cost share formula, the SCR D cost would be about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that. And in that package, what we would look to do is we'd look to add additional service hours to help with some of that on-time performance challenges we're seeing. We'd add some hours to improve the Route ninety on weekends and holidays to address some of those overloads. And then we'd look to move the Route ninety and increase the frequency on weekdays between kind of in our peak periods from six AM to six PM to thirty-minute frequency. This board has heard me talk about this initiative before. Really, that will be the key that will help support the Route ninety and get us to a frequency level where we feel we could move away from having to do four schedule changes a year in relation to the B C ferry schedule. So right now, we have to actually do four seasonal schedules to make sure we're aligned fully to the B C train, or sorry, the B C ferry schedule. So this initiative still remains what we would say the first priority. It helps release us from that complexity and also helps support our our main route. If you look at year two, what you see in year two, eighteen hundred hours, another heavy-duty bus, total cost of about three hundred thousand dollars, SCR D cost of about a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. This would be to work on, again, increasing the Route ninety. We could increase the frequency to thirty minutes for the entire service span on weekdays. And I'm sorry, and I kind of glossed over some of the HandyDart initiatives. We would be looking in year one to add a bus, and I haven't got it costed yet, but I will provide you with costed platform for that. But through our custom transit service review, you know, this year, we're adding additional service. But we need to add, what we heard through that review was adding additional capacity at peak times was required. So we'd look in year one to add an additional light-duty bus to the fleet so that we could add additional capacity in those peak times. Sorry, I didn't mean to gloss over that. It's still a very, very important part of this process. Then going to year two, so that's twenty, year twenty six, twenty seven, we'd continue to grow the Route ninety, get to that thirty minutes for the entire service span on weekdays, most likely increase some of that frequency on the weekends as well. Then in year three, because of those increases we're seeing on the Route two, we feel that it would be appropriate to increase some of our hours there, nine hundred hours, and some medium-duty buses. Again, we could probably utilize some medium-duty buses there in because of the lower ridership numbers that we're seeing. Total cost would be about two hundred thousand dollars. Of course, SCR D cost is a hundred and twenty eight. That would get us to sixty minutes frequency kind of Monday to Saturday with thirty-minute frequency at the peak times. You'll notice the little red caution on this slide, though. You know, and I I know this board's quite aware that staff is working quite, quite hard on options for Mason Road facility as we continue to get closer to capacity there. Lots of work is being done, and I know there's gonna be a full report on Mason Road coming to the board later this year. I believe in the fall of this year, the B C Transit, the SCR D are working together on. Currently, we're exploring other parking options, maybe as an interim solution. So lots of good work being done there. But we do have to highlight that currently, there is a bit of a caution, red flag there as we add more buses and we run into capacity issues at the facility, that we just need to highlight that. The other piece I just want to highlight here, these are the initiatives that we've kind of segmented out. But if this board wanted to consolidate initiatives, so I'll just use the example. Let's take year one, the weekdays on Route ninety, and phase two, the Route ninety. If you want to combine those initiatives into year one, that is your privy, that is your prerogative to do that. And then what would happen is your year three initiative, the increasing the number two route would move up to year two. So if you consolidated year two and year one into year one, then everything other, every other initiative would move forward. So B C Transit tends to kind of segment these out in kind of cost buckets that we think are manageable by by local government. But if you said, you know, you want to combine the two hundred and sixty thousand dollar cost with a hundred and fifty one thousand dollar cost and do all of that Route ninety work in one year, we would take that back, we would cost that, and we would, we would present that to the province for for additional funding. So my last slide here is just carrying on. So moving into year four and additionally some other priorities. Now, we have not costed these priorities yet because they, as I mentioned, would be sequenced out kind of in year four. But these future priorities, you'll notice a bit of a deviation from our original Transit Future Action Plan. And that's what I was referring to before with the with the additional data and and just some of the increases we've seen. We just kind of continually readjust some of those priorities as we continue to analyze system performance. One thing you'll note here is that we've adjusted those priorities because of what we're seeing on the Route two. Not commonly known is the fact that in the current system, we block Routes one, two, and three together for efficiencies. So what that means is when a a Route number one bus pulls into the, say, Trail Bay Mall Exchange, it then changes, the destination sign above may change to a number two. It'll do the number two route, it comes back, it changes to a number three. That's just an efficiency that we use when we're blocking buses. It maximizes our efficiencies. But with the increases we're seeing on the Route two, and with still having a plan to modify and make some increases to the Route one, it's really increased. And and we've seen those increase in frequency, it's really created an opportunity for us to introduce a new Route five between the upper and lower Gibson area. That was previously further down in the list, but honestly, the success of the Route two has actually kind of facilitated a need for us to look to kind of break up that one, two, and three blocking. And if we do that, it it opens up an opportunity to provide additional service between lower and upper Gibsons. Then you'll see kind of the next year continuing, also some continuing effort on the Route ninety, increasing that frequency to on weekends. Continued investment in the Route two, moving the Route two from a circuit, from a one-way route to a bidirectional route. If we move Route two to bidirectional in the next couple of years as it increases in its growth, what that would do is instantly increase our frequency. You can think about it, it'd almost double your frequency if you move to bidirectional service on that route. And then obviously, additional, you know, support on the Route ninety. I would say, you know, in the previous TFAP, there were some some references to expansion to some other areas. And I think those will continue to kind of move into this this cycle of priorities. But based on the data that I've kind of presented and and what we're seeing, working on that base of the system first, making sure it's really stable, focusing on where we're seeing that growth and supporting that growth is really critical to the overall system and some of the challenges that we're currently experiencing before we move on to to moving into different different areas. So thank you for your time. I know it's a lot to digest. Hope you've had a chance to read the package. But I'd be open and and more than willing to take any of your questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ringma. I know it is a, it's an important document to
I know it is a, it's an important, uh, document to, uh, uh, allow the public to come, to have a look at what it is we are working on for the transit system. And I'm going to, at this point, before I take questions, I'm going to, uh, uh, ask that we accept all, uh, all reports. Uh, I have a, and all in favor? Okay, uh, so we can include that report in your questions if you wish, uh, directors. And I'm going to go to, uh, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm wondering, I think this is a question for Mr. Ringma, but if it's not, I apologize and we'll defer it to staff. The on-time performance, uh, was mentioned as suffering and I'm wondering if, uh, BC Transit has done a, an analysis around how much of that is related to BC ferries. Uh, we know that late at night, the ferries, when they're running late, the buses wait for that. How is that affecting on-time performance of the system as a whole? Thank you.
Yeah, through, through the chair, uh, thanks for your question, uh, Director Toth. I, I, Ahmed may have, so staff may have some comments. I might, I just kind of look at what we've seen. Um, and yes, you know, the ferry, ferries in two ways, not only traffic coming off the ferries, um, which can impact congestion, um, for routing and on-time performance. Our buses, we, we tend, and this is, is the challenge is that we, we try to stay to our schedule, but we obviously recognize that if the ferry is only five minutes behind, um, that we, that it makes sense to kind of wait for those ferry passengers, um, because our frequency is not great enough. We know those passengers would be left at the ferry terminal for a significant amount of time before the next bus comes through there. So, um, you know, it is a challenge for staff, uh, Ahmed and his team to balance schedule adherence with customer service, right? So I, I would say yes, on the surface, that is, it is a challenge for us. Um, I've seen some preliminary analysis on on-time performance for the ferry system itself. And, um, they as well have some work to do there from what I've seen. So, um, maybe I'll just flip it over and see if staff have any comments, but I, I, I do think that is contributing. The other piece is just the summer congestion and the, the summer congestion levels that we're seeing. If you looked at our on-time performance over the year, you'd see it gets worse as the summer, um, period happens versus kind of some of our, uh, our winter, winter periods.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Manager Kedwa. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Uh, thank you to the chair. Um, yes, exactly what, um, Mr. Ringma has said. We, we do get impacted by the ferry terminal, but we also have quite a bit of, um, uh, performance-related challenges when it comes to the highway issues. For example, last Monday, when we had a big accident, all our buses were stuck on one side, uh, three of them and three on two on this side. They were interlined and they were blocked together with Route 2 and 3s and two and fours. So we could not get that. So we had to do a very special, um, sort of arrangement to restore service to them, those, those three routes, so that those people are not suffering how, how, because those buses were stuck. So this, uh, does sort of snowballs and impacts our, um, our performance. Uh, so all in all, we, we try to restore service and we try to minimize the impact, uh, to the best of our ability. But these, these are the facts that we live with. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go to Director McMahon.
Uh, yes, I was, uh, going in the same director, direction as Director Toth here. Uh, I was wanting to know how much of the on-time performance issues we're having are completely outside of our control because they're either the highway or they're BC ferries. So if we are not to address other problems until we address the on-time performance issue, we might never get there because I don't see the highway getting fixed anytime soon and BC ferries are giving us reassurances, but their performance is not improving either. So why are we, uh, uh, basing this whole plan on, on time performance?
Yeah, uh, thank you for your question through the chair. The, I think the key thing, if we talk about the highway congestion, again, we clearly know our Route 90 is the route that's most affected. Um, I think the key that I want to get through, or the key message I want to get through to, to the board is that if we can increase the frequency to a, to a certain level on the Route 90, yes, we may still run into congestion issues. Yes, there may still be some challenges with accidents on the highway. But at least if we get to a certain level of frequency, we know we're going to be able to handle the, the passenger loads that we are currently experiencing. And we know that we can get that to a level where there are buses coming at a, at a, a frequent enough, uh, rate that our customer service is going to be quite a bit higher than it is currently. Um, right now, if you miss, miss a bus or the ferry is extremely late and that bus does not come, you may be waiting 45 minutes at the ferry terminal, which is not a pleasant experience when somebody's coming over and they just either want to get home or they want to see friends or families or what that is. So I don't think, I wouldn't say we're basing the entire, um, analysis and priorities on just strictly on-time performance. We know in any transit system across the province, we need to continually be monitoring congestion on-time performance. It's one of a, of many of the different metrics that we use. Um, but I think to answer your question, Director, you know, really the focus is if we can get to that 30 minute frequency, it just, it supports the service in so many different ways. Um, it releases us from having to do four different schedule changes. Um, it just improves our overall level of customer service. Um, we're going to have to deal and Ahmed, you know, great kudos to staff for the issue that they, they, they outlined, um, you know, this week or last week. You know, staff will still do what they can do to, to, um, hotspot and mitigate against some of those issues that are going to come up. But if we can get that frequency to a certain level where we feel we're supporting the transit system, I think we're going to see, uh, continued ridership growth, which is, uh, which is a good thing.
Thank you. Uh, Director White.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Ringma's response on that. Um, uh, I, that's something I strongly believe in too, is, uh, is, is the, the concerns about on-time performance. Really they're addressed by frequency here. It's not, I, I'm not really hung up on on-time performance. It's going to, accidents are going to happen on the highway and, and they happen in every community. And, um, I, I find when I'm taking, uh, the very superior transit system in, in Gib, or, or sorry, in Vancouver, uh, there, those buses aren't always on time, but sometimes the next one will come. Or, or sometimes, sometimes you show up and the bus will be perfectly late for when you show up. I'd like, ferries sometimes work that way too, uh, to be honest. I know we don't like to admit it, but sometimes they work in our favor when they're late, uh, because we're late too. Um, but that's, uh, I, I just want to address this because it's been brought up twice now. So, um, I've got lots of questions and I can make them brief. Um, I want to get to, I mean, my, my big concern here is that our, this, this, all, all these, all this planning goes out the window when the province doesn't come up with its, its side of the funding. And, uh, I look at this and I'm already going like, well, awesome, but this is, it's too late. I want everything bumped up like by at least a year, maybe, maybe three years would be nice, but it's too late for that. But, um, uh, why, I mean, we, we were confident that the threshold this year, we, we was, we were going to meet it. I heard that from the minister, I heard that from BC Transit because our ridership had gone up. Um, so we were going to, we were finally going to get our, our expansion plan that we've been trying to work on. We've been proposing for years and it didn't happen. So what was the reason? I mean, I know I've heard the just lack of funding, but where was the threshold set about communities that did receive their funding and communities that didn't this time? I know it was a surprise because we thought we, I know Mr. Ringma expected that we would get our funding. Um, so that's my first question, why, where? And then, and then I guess secondly, can we, is there any chance for a multi-year commitment? Um, so we can actually be sure our, we can get, uh, have our plan for a few years. Um, I guess I'll, I'll keep it at that for now.
Thank you, Director White. Uh, does Mr. Ringma have any response to that?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you, um, Director White for your question up through the chair. Yeah, so I like, what I would, uh, ca- categorize expansions this year. Um, two comments, both similar. Unprecedented demand for, for expansions this year. Um, when we go through our transit improvement process, typically we go through about three phases. We're in about phase two right now, perfect time for me to be presenting to count, to boards and councils, getting their feedback before we go to the final round and present, um, back the final, um, costing and initiatives that are proposed. Typically, when we go through that process, we see actually reduction in the overall requests as we go through the three phases. Local governments see the cost, they start to do some budgeting, they move some things around and we see a reduction. Last year, all three rounds of that process, we saw increases. And that may be full, well said, maybe from the lack of transit resources that were made available kind of at the tail end of the COVID period. So think of it, the pressure behind the dam was probably building. Um, so what BC Transit has to do, so I'll just say unprecedented demand, but also unprecedented spending by the province. I have to give the province kudos. They did allocate $160 million to transit expansions. But unfortunately, the resources did not match the overall demand that BC Transit had. So what happens then is then BC Transit has to implement what we, uh, call a transit evaluation process. So we have a multi-account level evaluation. We look at everything from, again, ridership productivity, um, there's some critical fixes that need to happen, um, where we're, where we have systems that are, are fully oversubscribed and we're leaving, you know, multiple people behind or there's safety issues that need to be addressed. We've ranked all of these different things, um, alignment to provincial targets, uh, whether it's GHG goals or, uh, also our mandate letter goals. And we have to go through this multiple account evaluation. We do that every year. In my time at BC Transit, we either had all the funding or we've had no funding. This is probably the first year of my seven years at BC Transit where we had good funding, but not enough to support, um, all of the requests that we had. Secondly, we ran into another challenge, which is on the bus side of things. Uh, procurement of buses, i- if from an industry perspective, perspective has gotten more and more challenging. We used to be able to procure buses in about an 18-month timeframe that's expanded at least out to 24 months. And also where we used to go to bus manufacturers and say, hey, we need 30 buses and we would get them. The bus manufacturers are coming back to us and saying, hey, you know what, we can only give you 20 buses or, or those because they have so much demand themselves and there's still some supply chain issues. So, sorry, long-winded answer, uh, to your question, um, Director White. But what I can tell you is there is a process, uh, evaluation process behind the scenes that BC Transit uses. We have to rank those priorities and unfortunately, um, I say fortunately, your handy dart system, we were able to support your handy dart system this year with expansion, but we were not able to support the, uh, Route 90 expansion that this board had approved last year. So we've added that back into the mix. Um, in terms of long-term funding, just to answer your question on long-term funding, you know, that is a, a provincial, the, the province kind of decides, um, we go to them year to year in our, in our funding. Um, they have made some comments about longer term, kind of three-year commitments to, uh, transit funding. So I think we're moving down that path where we have a little bit of a better idea from a BC Transit perspective on what our funding will be for expansions moving forward. Um, but the, the unknown again is the amount of requests that we get for expansions. So, um, I think we're looking at our evaluation process. We're trying to make some adjustments to recognize, um, some of the points you made about, um, you know, communities that maybe didn't get, um, the expansion requirements that they had this year. Does that help get them, um, a greater, um, points, uh, in, in the next year because they didn't get an expansion first year? All of those things we're looking at, um, we're reevaluating that process because as I mentioned, this is the first time we had to go through that process and actually, um, determine kind of some systems that got expansion and some that did not. So lots of work that goes behind the scenes. You are correct, funding on our end is always going to be kind of the, the, the gateway to actually implementation. Um, and again, my, my role is to continue to advocate for this system. Um, I am very happy to do so and, and continue to advocate to try to get the provincial funding required to get these initiatives moving forward.
Thank you. And with the election coming, I would hope that, uh, after that, we would be able to look at, uh, a more stable funding model, uh, a multi-year funding. And that, uh, because we were turned down this year, we could, uh, we, we'd be on the top of the list for the next year. I'm going to go to Director Ingster.
Thanks. I'm sure we'll talk to them in September about those things, hopefully. Um, it, good, good to see the Stanley Cup collection, Rob. We're already starting on the same page. Um, behind you there. Well done. Um, and I also wanted to, uh, um, applaud our transit manager for being at the ferry meeting the other day. Um, I know it was quite a long commute, uh, but for him to come there, but I'm glad, I was glad to see him there and part of that process and I encourage him to do about as much as he can. Ferry is a really important piece of our, of our transportation model. My concern, uh, I look at this, the, the three, the three years, I guess, proposals here. The corridor that I've been talking about since 2005 at this table, um, is good. And I love to see improvements on that and the improvements in frequency. Um, I think that at this board and maybe with our staff's guidance and, and Rob's that we should start talking about other routes. I mean, it's good to see the upper and lower Gibsons being worked on, but I want to see, uh, I want to see Route 2 considered and moved up the list as soon as we can. Um, I see some synergies with, uh, uh, the growth part of the Seashell community, the shores and with Seashell, which are 3,000 to 4,000 people. So that's almost the size of Gibsons. Um, we built roads, the District of Seashell has built roads that can take buses and people. And I don't know why, uh, Director White's wagging his head because I was supporting his upper lower Gibsons, but, um, anyway. Um, so I'd like to see us look at moving two. I think there's some synergies also as well, um, to connect to Half Moon Bay. If we look at two, um, to going into the Welcome Woods area to then come back if possible to add an extra bus route out there. So I think there's a lot of ideas because that's now 5,000 people we can service if we look at two. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Director Ingster. Didn't hear a question in there, but, uh,
There was a question. How do we move up two?
How do we move up two? I think it's up to us. Yeah.
Yeah, I can, the, through the chair, I could provide just a quick comment there, Director Backs. Um, it, it, you know, very similar to, uh, Director White's request about moving up Route 5. Um, as I outlined, right now for year one, um, there's a $260,000, 2,700 hour expansion. Year two is 1,800 hours and, uh, $151,000. It is, this board's, you know, pretty to combine those into one initiative for year one, which would bump everything up one year in, in the process. Um, what I think the data, and, and when we look at all the, um, pieces of the transit system, I think it is BC Transit's recommendation to put a sizable contribution into the Route 90, also recognizing that Route 2 is important. That then helps create some of that upper lower Gibson opportunities down the road. But that is, that is the tougher question is, is on the, the funding side and the fact that to expedite those priorities, you would need to combine the commitment, uh, of years one and two.
Thank you. It's up to us to decide whether or not our taxpayers will support this and then we're, we have to wait for the provincial government to, uh, support their side of it. I'm going to go to Director Stanford.
Thank you, Chair. And I just put a plug in for Route 90. Um, we, we are quite full when it gets, it gets to the terminal and it is a very popular route, um, that I can attest for. So let's not lose 90 in the, in the process, the growth of 90. Um, my question is more a, a general question, um, and it's both to BC Transit and to staff. When I'm looking at these reports and I do have an understanding and sense of where input is coming from, the communities, um, I'm not getting a clear sense of how, uh, staff, specifically drivers, are engaged in these kinds of stats and reports. What kind of input do, uh, drivers get on a provincial level, like tra- transit routes in general, but also specifically on the Sunshine Coast? Where do they fit into this, these plans?
Yeah, thank you, uh, for your question, uh, through the chair. Um, through the Transit Future Action Plan process, then, and I guess I would start off by saying in the Sunshine Coast Regional District, the great, the great thing is, is that your dr- operators and drivers are SCRD staff, which is great. So there's already that closer connection than in some of our other systems where we hire a third-party operating company to perform transit services. So right there, um, you're already a step ahead of probably a lot of other systems. Um, but in terms of actual engagement, I guess from BC Transit perspective, when we do our Transit Future Action Plan, part of our working group includes engagement with operators. So we would have, we would have surveyed and, and requested operator feedback as we were going through that Transit Future Action Plan process. And then I think as we revisit each year, again, our relationship with Ahmed and his team in terms of their daily interaction with drivers, they're always getting continual feedback from drivers and that is fed in through your staff level into our discussion. So to give you an example, we will run the data, we'll sit down with staff, we'll discuss the priorities. So these were discussed prior to them being presented to the board and Ahmed would have an opportunity to provide any other insights, local insights, um, which are obviously very critical to, to planning and expansion of a transit service. Um, but there is a conduit there for that conversation, that engagement. Um, and just like I say, it's, it's great to have, uh, uh have your staff who've through a lot of our surveys have come through as uh very highly rated in terms of their customer service and and abilities. So I think you've got a great team there. They're more than happy to provide input and and we're happy to work with staff when we start to develop some of these plans.
Thank you. Um, Director Gabi has has not yet spoken on this subject, so I will go to her.
Well, I thank you very much, Chair, and through you, um, I think, uh, a few comments and a and a question for staff. Um, if we were to fast track, because this is a decision that we can make today, like if we want to fast track um the implementation there, what if we were to fast track, what impacts would that have on Mason Road? Because I see that in three years, this is going to be a problem. So then we would be making that um a little closer, which might not be, I don't know how feasible that is. Um, so if staff can answer that, but I also have a a comment on how it really strikes me how everything is connected and how um and I'm wondering how much communication happens at the higher levels because how we get around impacts so many things. It impacts our ferries. Uh, and the ferries are having congestion problems. So if if we had a reliable public transportation system, we would be able to, you know, have more walk-ons, less cars on the road, less cars on the ferry. And also with the OCP review, we're, you know, we're planning our communities and without, you know, um without like uh that, you know, multi year funding or that certainty as to what we can do with public transportation. It makes it very difficult to plan communities. So hopefully we can push for that multi year funding and I'm I'm happy to hear uh Mr. Ringma talk about, you know, that might be kind of in the in the future. But yeah, so question to staff about Mason Road, please.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. K.
Thank you for the question and through the chair. Um, yes, definitely. Uh, this is a uh a ongoing concern and staff with BC Transit, we are working on to finding some solutions. The one of the things that we are actively involved is to look for a short term parking solutions because our Mason Road yard is that capacity. We are not only uh for the for the Route 90 expand, the expansion on the Route 90 for every 30 minutes frequency that would require one bus if we go further for the year two, that would also require another bus. So we are um at 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 this time, we are very much at um at very cha- at at the brim, we cannot find any parking spots. So actively we are looking for those um short term parkings. In addition to that, as as you are also aware, that we are also trying to make some arrangements at the Mason Road Yard for our BBS, for battery electric buses. So those buses is going to be coming in and they will have a um a charging infrastructure with them that would take another parking spots that we have at this time. So we are actively engaged with BC Transit and the and the consultants that are there. And we also internally trying to take some step to, we can determine how we are going to do the find some real estate. And in the interim, we have um uh very actively looking for a short term parking spots at this time. So we have a couple of um sort of uh areas in mind, but the conversation is continuing on. So all these things will have to work in part and person. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you for your answer. I I would hope that the 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 regional district is currently uh looking into the lands that we do own and the uses that we're putting them to. And maybe we could find some temporary parking for you somewhere within the uh in that area, I would hope. Uh, I'm going to go to Director McMahon for next question.
Right. And another uh uh voice of support for multi year funding commitment from the province, particularly given how cumbersome the budgeting processes for transit, given the misalignment between our financial years. It always makes my head hurt every year when we have to deal with this. I wanted to talk about weekends because on page 15 of our package, you can see very clearly that the um the usage of the buses is really high on weekends, but this is not mentioned anywhere in the service expansion priorities. So if I take the bus on the weekends, what am I chopped liver? Like, why are we not uh looking at a higher priority to relieve the congestion on weekends?
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you for your question, Director McMahon. Um, we have identified um in year one. You you see clearly in white where we've said phase one, Route 90 increased frequency 30 minutes to 6 a.m. to 6 p.m., but we have put in there additionally improved Route 90 on weekends and holidays to address overload. So I think it would be in phase one, it would be a strategic approach to adding additional buses um at some of those peak times where we see those and 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 obviously I showed in the data as well, those impacts that we're having on weekends. So there is a a nod to addressing some of the weekends in that 2700 hours and that first bus in year one. But I think you are correct. You don't see um a further addressing of weekends until year four, which would, you know, be kind of a little bit later down the road. So I think we would continue to monitor it. I do see that we would put some injection of hours for weekends in that first year package. I would agree with you. I I think you'll see it bubble its way into the other years as we continually kind of analyze and see that data. Those trend lines continue. Um, the weekends will need continued investment.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was referencing the table on page 31 of our package, which doesn't mention weekends, and you're referencing a reference uh somewhere to weekends. So
Yeah, sorry, in my presentation, um, in the, if you look to the presentation on page 22. And that may be, and 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 apologies, Director McMahon, what sometimes happens is in those um tips of costings where a little, it's a little bit abbreviated, it's short. Uh, it the more detail is in, if you look at the um slide 22 of of my presentation package, you will see a a node to uh overloads on weekends. So apologies for that.
Thank you, Mr. Ringma. I'm going to go to Director White for a question.
I was going to ask about weekends too. So thank you, Director McMahon, for doing that. And I'm I'm glad to hear there's some flexibility in the the first year proposal. Uh, another question I had, and this this is getting a little down to the micro, but it's a and it's and it's it's a on a route I don't use. And I I wasn't able to make it to the workshop that would that happened a month or two ago. So it may, this may have come up there, but frequently I'm hearing concerns about Silverstone opening um in West Seashell and the and the service there. Um, and and the need for, and I don't know if there's been a tweak uh to to help support that yet, or if that might be planned in in um the number two. Uh, any kind of change to to number two uh to help get get a bus up the road to more directly service that. And and as related to that, I'm wondering if a lot of there's, there's been any um notice from District of Seashell representatives or from um from our staff that just an increased use because of it and people walking to and from Silverstone because we're talking about a lot of employees and a lot of family visits and things that uh really are is a is a coast wide issue.
Thank you for the question, Director White, and through the chair. Silverstone, uh, we engaged in with them um in about March 2023. Um, and explained to them and they asked initially that how this bus is going to be servicing that area. So we went back and there is a report on 2022, 2020 that um sets out a steps how the Silverstone property owners should be engaging with with the SCRD departments. And after COVID, when they, when we started our conversation with them, they, we explained to, we explained the steps that they need to take. For example, there's the, for us, our bus number two to go up when they're going north, Kingsburg, the road. That is a private road, not assumed, and it has a very nicely um sort of um a median that prevents the big bus to turn. So we pointed that out to them in March 2023, that these things have to be adjusted. The uh the assumption of the road has to be taken over by uh the town, uh the district. And then then we can do that. And also there will be a few extra minutes to be added to the schedule. So we offered there, uh, we invited them to continue with a conversation with us. But as unfortunately, they did not choose to do so. And they came to us um earlier this year when they're about to open it. So we provided them for a different alternative. However, we said we cannot continue to turn our bus, our big bus, which is 40 footer bus to go there and service that area because there is no turning air, turning point. We cannot even go onto the road on the Derby and to turn the bus around safely. So that was impossible. As far as the bus stops are concerned, uh, we have requested and we are working with the BC Transit staff to include the bus, uh, the intersection of um Cowrie and Derby to include a new bus stop. In the interim, we uh offer them them that we can continue to uh assist the able bodied folks to um get off and get on the bus. However, wheelchair, they have to develop a path. So we, a wheelchair can be developed. Right now it's a very, when the bus makes a left turn on Derby, there is a gravel road there and obviously we cannot allow anybody to get off there. Otherwise the 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 legal requirements would be holding us. So we have been engaged with them and we are working for with the BC Transit and asking their them to come and talk to us, but they are a little bit shy about that.
What a great answer. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ringma, you have something to say?
Yeah, and I just want to follow up um to Ahmed's comments and and it was great. Director White had mentioned uh our workshop and 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 the great thing was we were able to sit down with planners um from Seashell Gibson's SCRD. We were able to kind of walk through some of that transit planning 101. And one of the key things we talked to them about was what we call our development referral program. And this is good for the board to know as well. When you're getting requests for development from developers, we have full infrastructure guidelines that we can provide to them to make sure that when they do do a development that is transit friendly and transit oriented. Um, and that again goes to even Director Gabi's point about, you know, as you build communities and you want to utilize transit as an option, um, we need the support of developers to understand what some of these infrastructure guidelines are and make sure that they're building these road networks that are conducive to transit, that are conducive to active transportation. So we uh we had a great opportunity to talk to the planners um in your respective regions. We've provided them with some of that information to hopefully moving forward, prevent the situation that Ahmed had spoken to where um where they build it and that they expect transit uh services. And we just physically and safely cannot operate in some of those, some of those areas. So it's unfortunate. We're trying to work and and find solutions, obviously, at this point. But moving forward, just making sure that that it's clearly known to to developers that that we do have infrastructure guidelines. We can provide them as much data as we can. We're open and and willing to discuss uh new developments and and service to new developments. But there has to be a process that's involved.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Director McMahon.
Interesting. Uh, so I'm always on about Handy Dart. It's one of my favorite topics. And I was boggled recently to discover that two thirds of the passengers using our Handy Dart buses are ambulatory. So they don't need these honking big buses with the wheelchair lifts. What they need is, you know, some assistance getting to and from their destination, but a much smaller vehicle could do the job. But looking on BC Transit's website, it doesn't appear as if you have any other options other than the large Handy Dart buses. So my two part question is, are there any other options that BC Transit supports? And secondly, how do you work with nonprofits and other agencies to help fill the gap in transportation needs? For instance, Vancouver Coastal Health has a volunteer driver program. There are other agencies in the community with wheelchair equipped vans, like is 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 there a coordinated effort to address the needs of the disabled passengers? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your question. Um, a little bit to unpack there, but I'll try to do my best to get through it. You are correct. Um, many passengers in the Handy Dart uh system are um are ambulatory. So they they do have mobility. Number one, um, what we need to work on is what we call travel training. So how many of those current Handy Dart customers could potentially be taking um conventional transit? We have, we've invested millions of dollars in our fleet uh having uh buses that kneel, so they lower to the ground, having ramps that deploy. Um, they're all wheelchair accessible. There's still some infrastructure concerns clearly along the highway and bus stops that need need to be addressed. But one of the opportunities is just through travel training and training and working with um different groups to help them understand how the two different systems work. And I think we had some success doing that during our custom transit review and meeting with various different stakeholders in the um in in the in the caregiving um environment. So there's the first piece. The second piece on the bus type, it's very similar to our conventional transit system. Unfortunately, when you're building a transit system, you need to build for your peak times. You, you know, we 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 know, and I showed in kind of some of my slides, there's these peaks. It is the most efficient way to operate a transit system by building your system to handle those peaks. Because if you don't build for the peaks, what you need is you need double the amount of vehicles, which is double the amount of uh insurance, which is double the amount of lease fees, which is additional fuel, additional drivers, which is all cost. So although some may say, why do we have a large bus out there? We have a larger bus, our Arbock, 16 passenger with wheelchair accessibility because that is the most efficient for the transit system itself to operate. So that that is, I just want to kind of clear that up because that question also comes up on the conventional transit side. Sometimes on smaller routes, why don't, why do I see a large bus going by and there's only six people standing or sitting on that bus? So it's a, it's a great question, Director Ringman, and one that I'm happy to to address. BC Transit procures on a provincial basis, which does restrict us somewhat in terms of our flexibility of fleet type. So that you know, that is, that is one of our challenges. I think as we continue to explore such things as uh on demand services, um, I think we are looking at different fleet types as we continue to run into production challenges with different manufacturers. I think we're looking for flexibility. But again, there's efficiencies in BC Transit procuring on a on a provincial basis and getting the economies of scale that we get. In terms of work with other agencies, yes, always, you know, the legislated funding formula does, you know, prescribe that we work with local government partners in terms of funding transit. So we can't fund a standalone agency that's that's doing good work in this field. But what I think we can do, and and even through that custom review process, what I was really happy to see was, you know, we did several different focus groups where we had some of those um agencies come and speak to us. We had clients come and speak to us. We had drivers and operators come and speak to us about how we can improve the, not just the Handy Dart system itself, but also just the ecosystem of of supportive uh accessibility transportation within the region. And I think there's still work to be done there. There's no doubt about it. There's more coordination that can be done. We're feeling um, you know, capacity and constraints. They're feeling, you know, additional demand. Um, and I think this board has has done a good job of continually highlighting the need to not just focus on conventional transit, but also the Handy Dart system. Um, I think adding an additional, uh, the hours that we're adding this year will help. I think adding additional buses to capacity will help. Um, and just continuing that process of reviewing the service every two to three years, engaging all those different stakeholders and groups. Um, hopefully we can, we can continue to improve that service as well as just the overall ecosystem of accessible services on the coast.
Thank you, Mr. Ringma. Looks like I have another hand up. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just checking with you, if it's okay if I ask a question from within the staff report now, or do we want to?
Uh, I was going to draw the attention of the board to the appendix, uh, or sorry, Annex B. Page 27 of our uh of our report, we have um the Transit Improvement Program. Before I uh, before we turn our attention to that, I wanted to ask a question of my own about the Transit Transit for Youth. With the with the recent graduation of Kale Reed, uh, our our big, our greatest connection within the student uh body at Elphinstone uh has moved on to greater and better things. Uh, and I was, I I encourage staff to reach out to the the Student Council at the at the high schools to, in order to to help uh create a an atmosphere of excitement about this program uh in order to maximize its use and for it to be as successful as we're all hoping it will be. Uh, and with that, I'm going to uh entertain a question from Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, in in the In, in the presentation from Mr. Ringma on the B C Transit side, the comment was made about if we combine options one, year one and two, we can advance some things up. But looking at the staff report in on page sort of thirty one, thirty two, the, the second recommendation that's on page thirty two, it looks to me like it would actually maybe be better to combine years two and three. So year one would be sort of as presented. Years two and three are combined and that brings year four up. Just looking for some clarification because that's what I'm seeing in sort of option two, recommendation two on page thirty two. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, thank you, Director Toth, for your question. Absolutely. That is, you know, and I, I apologize. I should have actually read that recommendation two and maybe use that as more of a reference versus combining years one and year two. But I think that is the strategic decision that is before the board at this point is, is how you want to sequence those priorities, how you want to, you know, shoulder the impact of the, of the cost to the taxpayer. So absolutely, you know, we are here to work with, with the district and prioritize those in whatever sequence this board deems the best.
Working on switching technologies here because I've got a malfunctioning cord, it seems, for my laptop. Oh, so my camera's not on too. There we go. Yeah, a quest, a question on this, the staff report and the recommendations. I need a reminder of where we are at with our tax requisition for this past expansion. I know sometimes it comes back to the board and we approve just putting it back into. I don't know if it's, I don't know if that's happened yet where, if we've, if we've put those funds kind of back into. I don't know if it's general revenue or what, but.
I ask the Chief Financial Officer to put her Chief Financial Officer hat on?
Thank you, Chair. So I think it was quite minimal because it was anticipated to start in September of this year. So those will just not be actioned. I think the tax impact was only about twenty six thousand dollars, if I recollect. It was very minor. And so those will just go back into hopefully the general surplus. So we won't see anything in the Q two variance when it comes in July. But essentially, yes, those will go back into the kitty and will be reconsidered as part of the new annual operating agreement with these considerations.
In response to Director Toth's questions about the, the frequency of, on weekends, I'm looking at the recommendations as they appear on page thirty one and thirty two. And I don't see, either in recommendation one or recommendation two, the additional frequency for weekends, which is on Route ninety, which is, which is something that was pointed out in the presentation, that there is a, a need there. And so I wonder if there's any clarity on that.
Yeah, thank you, Director Backs. Yeah, I think, I think again, the description listed is, is quite concise. From, from looking at my planner's work and the planning work that we have for that first year expansion on the Route ninety, there would be a component that would be allocated to weekends. As highlighted in my presentation, as has been noticed by several directors, you know, the weekends will need some support. So I do see on my end, although it's not described there in the, in the brief description, there is some support for weekend service there. And again, here in the board, I will make sure to work with our planners and ensure that we allocate some of the hours towards that.
Thank you. Director McMann?
I'm concerned that for public transparency and for our own clarity when we're going back through these reports in the future, that the, the weekend service should be mentioned in the recommendation because it was identified as a, as, as an important issue. So I'm wondering if it's, if it's feasible to slightly amend the staff recommendations.
I'd like to make a, a motion to strike the word weekdays in the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven plan on page twenty seven in the recommendations.
Point of, point of order, Chair. We don't have a, we don't have a motion on the floor.
Sorry, excuse me. All right, well then.
You could put the motion forward that way.
In order to discuss the motion, I'd like to, I'm looking for someone to put, bring the forward, bring the motion forward.
I'm not ready. Personally.
Mr. Ringma, your hand is still up?
Yes, sorry, Chair. I just want to make one comment. This is, this is exactly the dialogue that we can, we can have here. Because as mentioned, there's still one more round of costing for B C Transit to go through before we bring our tips M O U to the board. So what I can do is if, if the board would like to see in, in one of those initiatives, additional reference to weekends, I will double check with my planning team that that is in fact in those calculations. If it is not, we will add it and we'll come back with a costed, costed platform that would, would have some recognition of the weekends. I think it's in there, but I want to double check. But we do have another round of costing to go through to make sure that that's in there before we come to the board with the final M O U.
I have a question.
Yeah, you have a question? Go ahead.
Could, yeah, this, this kind of brings us to, yeah, the, these recommendations is, well, there's two options actually on pages thirty one and thirty two. It's, they're quite complex because there's multi points to all of them. And we're already recognizing there's one, one confusion here about whether weekends aren't or aren't, should or should be mentioned here in either one of the recommendations, I think. But could I, could we get a, a summary of what the difference between recommendations one and two are on page thirty one and thirty two? What's, it's, it's challenging because there's a page break in the middle of them too. So I haven't been able to figure it out myself, what the difference is. Sorry about that. Maybe I should have put more time into it. But I, yeah, I, I only really saw the recommendation one originally.
Mr. Ringma?
Yeah, and I'll let Ahmed comment as well. What I see in the staff recommendations between recommendation one and recommendation two, recommendation two would move the Route two increased frequency sixty minutes from year three into year two. So year one would remain the same. Route ninety, Route ninety increases to thirty minutes. Year two would then be Route ninety and Route two. So that's the change that I see between the two, the two recommendations. If we did do that, what that would do by moving Route two from year three into year two, it would bump the new Route five and the realignment of Route one up to, to year three. So it would, in essence, achieve what I heard a lot of the board speak to today in terms of increases of those priorities. But apologies, Ahmed, I'll let you add your kind of thoughts there. I've seen it as your report.
Thank you. Director McMann? Oh, oh, sorry. Staff, staff wanted to have input on this?
Thank you for the question and through the chair. No, I was just going to point out the similar things that there, there's going to be a twenty seven, twenty eight would be an opportunity to modify and realign Route one if both are going to be combined. So that, what Mr. Ringma just explained.
Oh, I'll just, yeah, I'm, I'm, too, I'm having difficulty juggling all the different pieces of this because I was also looking at the table at the top of Route, page thirty one. And we had talked about the possibility of combining the, the second year and third year together, which from just, from a very high level is, is similar costs, the, the year one at plus, compared to year two plus three is, is, is very similar costs. And then year one is only one additional vehicle, which adding two vehicles right now obviously is problematic. So how does that compare to recommendation number two on page thirty two?
Go ahead. Thank you for the question. I was not quite clear. Would you mind please repeating the question?
Sure. I, I am, I'm trying to compare recommendation number two with combining on the table at the top of page thirty one, combining years two and three together as year two.
Through the chair, I can make a quick comment there. So what you see in the table on page thirty one, the top of the, the table at the top, page thirty one, is recommendation number one. Recommendation number two is the combination of what you see in that table, the, and Director McMann, I think you, you articulated exactly, would be the combination of the nine hundred hours in year three with the eighteen hundred hours in year two into one initiative for year two. Then, from my presentation, year four, which is Route one and Route five, would move up to year three, right? So if this board made that recommendation, what I would go back and do is cost out the Route one, Route five, and you'd come back with a fully costed three year M O U.
Go ahead. Thank you, Chair. Just, just wanted to clarify that what Mr. Ringma was saying, just wanted to add my comment to it. If you go to recommend, recommendation one and two, twenty five and twenty six, and if you combine twenty five and twenty six with twenty six and twenty seven, Route ninety will be, the frequency will be increased to thirty minutes during the span of their, their service weekdays from early in the morning to the late night when, when around ten, ten, ten thirty when they finish. Recommendation one only talks about six to six. Twenty six to twenty seven talks about the span of the Route ninety, whenever they're, however long they're working from five in the morning till ten thirty in the evening. And then also includes Route two frequency to sixty minutes. So that's perhaps the one that was, you're referring to earlier, Dr. Mc, Director McMann. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Kidwa. I, I just wonder if there's, if there's another way around this to, to include the weekends in, in the frequency, in the thirty minute frequency. In exchange for the six P M. to the end of the evening run, we could instead have the weekend runs happen from six to six. Is, does that make more sense? Is, is there flexibility within the system for us to decide to do that type of change?
Through the chair, thank you, Director Backs. The, my comment would be is that if you, so any additional service is going to come with an additional cost. So just looking at the, as it's written, Route ninety through the increase to thirty minutes. Again, my assumption is behind that there is some weekend work, although it's not in that line. The board could make a, a decision to say, we want to include weekends. I would go back to my planning team, see if there's any impact to the service hours involved to do that. I think there's already some hours in there, but I will double check. And then I would be able to come back to the board with the M O U. If that is a priority with just, it, it might just adjust the cost for year one slightly. So it is, this is the time, this is the time to make that decision.
All right, I've got a list of, of people that want to ask questions and I have our Chief Financial Officer, C E O. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I know it's been mentioned at the top of this report and its consideration, which is, I think what we'll have to contemplate as staff as well in these considerations are the implications to the site. So as Manager said, although we have very good intentions to try to expedite, there will be some implications to our ability to actually deliver on those. And we'll have to ensure that we have other things in place in order for us to be able to facilitate. So again, Mason Road site and our capacity to effectively implement these expedited changes will also have to be considered. So just need to be mindful of that because at some point, once we commit ourselves with B C Transit for these services, we have to ensure that we can actually deliver on them.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. What is the timeline on this decision? When do we have to make our decision on these recommendations in order for it to not impede the, the flow of information and funding requests? We have a deadline on this?
Thank you for the question. I, I think we need to, I, I don't have a definite date with me, so I don't want to speculate. I can get back to you with that information. Sorry.
Yeah, and maybe if I could add through the chair, Director Backs. Yeah, so as I mentioned, we have one more round of costing at B C Transit, which is due about mid to end of July, which would allow us to then do the final costing to come back to this board in September with a final M O U. So I would say, you know, time is of the essence at this point. We're taking this step to review these priorities with the board for exactly the discussion that's going on and, and a recommendation moving forward to get that final costing put together for, for the board.
Thank you. I'm going to go to my speaker's list. Director Gabiass.
Thank you, Chair. I'm through you. I'm, I'm glad that Acting C E O reminded us of capacity. And I'm looking at page thirty three on the organizational implications. And as much as I would like to, you know, like, step on the gas on this because we all want better public transportation, we want to get cars off the road, we want great service for our constituents. I feel like the engine is not ready to go fast. And like, I'm, I'm more inclined to go with the recommendation as it appears, as the staff recommendation to kind of, to not fast track this just so that we have all the pieces in place and we feel confident that we can deliver. I just, you know, as much, I'm sure staff wants to, would love to go fast as well. But I think it's, we have to be conscious of the stress that it's put on our facilities and our, on, on staff as well. So I would be more inclined to, to stick with the recommendation.
Are you putting, are you bringing forward a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll move the recommendations. Well, let me see, let me see, as they appear on page twenty seven and welcome the discussion.
Thank you.
We, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, do we have discussion on it? I see Director White has his hand up.
I'm opposed to this motion.
Sure.
I, I, I support recommendation number two. I think transit, I mean, we're, we're looking many years out in this plan. We're looking three, four years out. And, and we, we do need to, our communities overall, including users, more than anybody, need to be prepared to, for, for an uptake in, in using transit more. It's, the pressures in my community are really, really building. And, and those, those are coming provincially too, ironically. I, this is, this is a huge challenge right now in that, that we have provincial housing challenges and pressures that I think are maybe facing our municipalities a little more. And there's, there's a lot of opportunities for, for development and housing happening. A lot of that's happening in, in Gibsons and, and a lot of those opportunities and pressures are coming in very much in our faces in, in terms of needing much better transit services now. Like, we need it now. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking ahead three years here and going like, okay, well, this is really disappointing. Now we're talking about four or five years. So. So I, I really support making it a priority to plan. And it's inevitable, we are going to have to expand. I mean, I, I, the first thing I heard about Mason Road is, we've already have a report coming to us soon about, about expansion here. Staff is working on it. We already, we already looked at that in our previous budget, and I don't think, I don't think we should back off now on, on some of these badly needed expansions. And, and I mean, it's, my, my view on this has changed even just in the last few months because I'm seeing what the future needs to look like on the Sunshine Coast, and some of these discussions were coming up in, at the ferries meeting that a lot of us attended too. So I strongly support recommendation two. Not only that, I want to add weekends to that recommendation, and this is something that we really need to go to our community and say, this needs to be a priority to fund. And also, you have to use it, we all have to use it. I, I think we all have great excuses not to use transit right now because the frequency just isn't, isn't high enough. But once we get, once the province supports us to get the frequency higher, I think everybody's going to have to be using a lot, transit a lot more. And I know that's maybe in some of our areas more than others to start, but that's, that's, that's why I'm opposing this motion.
CFO Burrow.
Yeah, I, I think if, one of the considerations that could be part of this is, we typically focus on the actual BC Transit aspects of the proposals, and I think that there are some other implications, so the Mason Road, other alternative parking that will need to be incorporated in perhaps the next report, whatever the recommendation does pass, that we elaborate on what the implications to the expansion is, just so there's better understanding of the, the outfall of those. So maybe that could be sort of a subsequent, we don't, it's just because we have this adjunct project, which is Mason Road, that, that really does impact this, but it's not contemplated as part of your decision-making today. And so I think as we progress, whatever decision you do make, that we incorporate that into the following report, not just the BC Transit aspect of it.
Thank you. And I think that at this point, if we don't include an ask for weekends to BC Transit, we're not going to get a costing for that. So is there, so if we, if we do include an ask for weekends, we will get a costing for that, and, and the, and the ball will keep rolling. So I'm going to go to the speakers list, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not in support, I'm going to call them options because we deal with recommendations all agenda-long every day, but I'm going to deal, I'm going to oppose option one as well. And I think there's something that we need to think about with this, which is that the plan ends up getting adjusted every year depending on what comes from the province in funding. And, you know, I've been sitting at this table since 2019 as Director and since 2018 as the alternate, and every year, you know, Route Two enhancements, Route Five keep getting pushed back. Yes, COVID was a lot of that. But at the same time, it becomes not a priority, not a priority, not a priority. And I think the comments that Director White made are very, very valid in that, you know, the province is pushing for more transit use, more transit-oriented developments, and we need to move, we need to be seen as attempting to be as bold as we can. And if at the end of the day, the province doesn't approve the funding for it, then we have to cut the service back from what we envisioned for our community. And I think that makes a statement too to the province. We're ready to step up to the plate. You guys aren't. We have to scale back our, our ambitions because of that. So those are just my comments. I do support option two over option one. But in hearing the comments that I've heard, I would like to make an amendment to the recommendation that's on the floor, which would be to add a bullet under 2025, 2026, to read, "Consideration of adjustments to weekend service hours to meet peak demand," because I think that encapsulates the conversation we've been having about making sure weekend service is mentioned in year one. Thank you.
We have, we have a, we have a secondor.
We have a secondor on this, so the, the amended motion is to consider costing of
the weekend peak usage in the, in the first year. Is that correct?
My, my exact words were, "Consideration of adjustments to weekend service hours to meet peak demand." And that'll come back naturally through the costing.
And we have a second on that. Do we have any discussion on the amendment that is amendment to the motion? Director McMahon, no? No discussion? All right, no discussion. I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All in favor? That passes. So now we have an amended recommendation on the floor, an amended motion. Are there, there's more discussion on that? Director McMahon? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, indeed. Every, every week I open the Coast Reporter and I see another article about a multifamily subdivision being approved in Seashell. And that it's, it's, we are growing and we are densifying, and we are densifying in transit-served areas. And the province has at least officially said that they want to support mode shift. So if we're going to go to mode shift, we have to provide the service. So I'm, I'm with the rest here that, and I recognize that there are operational constraints and that we may be faced with having to backpedal a little bit somewhere down the road on, on, on our ambitious plans here, but I, I agree that we should send a clear signal to the province that we need more transit service. Thanks.
Director Angster.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to say a lot from the beginning comments, but we, we're still here. And it's a governance discussion, we got to move on sometimes, people. But anyway, on this issue of, I'm not going to support this, this, the, the number one that was introduced. I think that we need to make decisions to move a number of these priorities forward. There is heavy transit increasing use, and as Director McMahon mentioned, a lot of development that was mentioned that's happening, family development, so orientated development is in West Seashell, which is where the two is going to go. So I won't support that. I think we should even be, I can't believe, he used bold, that was going to be my word, but I'm going to say, "But for the grace of God walks this board." I'm going to say that. And I think we should be, go even further than this first in two years. I think, I want to push it even further to look at number two quicker, but that's not where this board looks like they're going, but I would push it. I'm going to tell you just a really quick personal anecdote. I talked to my kids an hour ago, I got this from you, you're talking about your kids, and I asked them what their day looked like, and they both said, "I'm doing this, this, and this," and then "I'm jumping on the bus." Two kids. Young people needing our bus system, and they need more buses. I'm not going to support this. I think we should add more buses and more time slots quickly. Thank you.
Director Gabias.
Thank you, Director Bax. Well, I guess I'm going to vote against my own motion. I really appreciate that discussion. I think this is a really important one, and I, like, I love changing my mind. And I'm comforted by the fact that we can backpedal, we can make changes as we go along if we feel like there's, you know, it's too ambitious or we can't meet the, our commitments. And I'm, I'm also looking forward to seeing the report about Mason Road and what that's going to take and what the impacts are on the organization and on the taxpayers is going to be. So I agree with the, with the directors here that we need to be bold and that we need to, especially given the pressures with the housing, Seashell and Gibson's becoming more and more populous, and, and trying to encourage people to get on the bus too, including youth. So making it more appealing for them would really, really help. So I really appreciate the discussion we're having today, and yeah, thank you very much.
Director White.
I was, I have a, I have a question. I have a question. You, you, are you going to speak something?
After we vote, yeah.
Okay. I have a question for staff about reports pertaining to this, to this motion. Are we expecting anything in the next couple of weeks? Is there going to be something coming back by July 11? I know it's, I know it's.
I'm happy to speak after.
Because I could move that this motion be postponed until.
Call the question.
All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? That mission, that motion fails. So where do you want to go from here?
I'll move option two. My, what I was thinking was just adding the words "and weekends" to the two mentions of, of Route 90 to just get those costed out for us. I don't know if, if that's better for staff than consideration, or, I'm just trying to figure out the, what's, what's easier for kind of the, the direction and costing to...
Mr. Ringma, that's a question for you, I believe.
Yeah, I think the way Director Toth outlined it is, is more than adequate for us to, and obviously me being a participant today, to work with our planning team to make sure that we're, we're clear that we're looking for increases on the Route 90 for weekend service, particularly, you know, with those, those peak times. I think that's where we could, we can, we can focus that and make sure that we have those, those, those taken care of. So I think, I think that, that language that, that was used will, will be adequate for BC Transit to make sure that we have the correct costing in place.
Great. I'd like to put forward that option two with that, that addition of the wording of consideration that Director Toth previously suggested. And you've got a secondor.
And we have a secondor for that. Are you speaking of recommendation two that appears on page 32 of the report? Okay, do we have any questions based on that motion?
You have a question.
Thank you. I just would like to clarify that the addition of the verbiage, "Consideration of adjustments to weekend services, service hours rather, to meet peak demand," is to appear underneath 2025, 26, as well as 2026, 27, and 2027, 28, or solely 2025, 2026?
Well, if it's considered in the first year, then I don't think it needs to be considered in the second year. Is that correct? Because it would, it's already been considered. Some clarity?
So I'm thinking it might need to be in both of those, but.
The director is correct. So in the first year, we're discussing increasing the frequency to 30 minutes from six to six, and in the second year, we're increasing the frequency from, throughout the service day on weekdays, and we're going to, in both years, we're going to look at a consideration for peak weekend use, going to 30 minutes. Does anyone have any other discussion on this motion? Does anyone need this motion read back to them, or do we all fully understand it? Okay. Did we get a secondor on that? Okay, good. I will call the question.
I put it forward that way. There was no amendment.
There's no amendment. So I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Would you like that recorded?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to record Director Angster's opposition to that. And with that, we have a recommendation. That's great. I'm going to call for a five-minute break. I'm sorry, see, Corporate Officer, did you want to speak before we break?
We were just curious whether or not there is any desire to have considerations for the operational and site implications as part of these amendments included in the next report.
I, I think any more information that we can get is going to help to inform our decision-making. Yes.
I would prefer a motion because it's sort of a, a change from what we have, because we have two parallel, we have a parallel project that impacts this, but we want to integrate it into the considerations, not just do same-for-same like we do, so.
Anybody want to craft that? Go ahead.
I think it's three that was supposed to appear.
Was that not, was recommendation number three on page 27 included in the, in the original, in the motion that we passed?
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one. We're going to take a five-minute break to figure this out, and then we'll come back.
Let's figure, let's close this off and.
Yeah. Oh.
Go down further. I'm sorry, my line's broken.
All right. I'm going to call a break. Thank you very much. We'll be back in five minutes. We'll be back in five minutes. I'm looking to Manager Sol to introduce this. Thank you, Manager Sol.
I thank you for this opportunity. What we have before you today is a summary of a provincial engagement opportunity on what they're calling non-residential packaging and paper, but what we've often referred to as institutional, commercial, and industrial recycling. This follows a further engagement period that the province had in 2021, where they first set a sort of policy direction timeline in place, that they were looking to have a decision on that direction by 2028. And so what they've done is sort of come back to the public, industry, and government with some very high-level ideas, guiding principles, talks about what sort of targets should be set. So this is a very high-level sort of engagement that will help them narrow down and then come up with a policy direction, which will probably require further engagement in the future. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Before I go to Director McMahon, I have some questions of my own. The, I'm sure there's a, a little bit that we can do as a regional district, but are, do you know of any actions that the provincial government and/or the federal government are taking in the way of legislation and, and policy in order to try to reduce the amount of packaging that's included in, you know, I go to, I go to the local stores and I come home and, and I, I almost have more recycling than I have product sometimes.
Through the chair, and thank you for the question. Indeed, one of the potential policy directions that was part of this engagement is talk about regulations on packaging at a provincial level. This sort of follows some recent decisions the federal government has made around certain types of packaging that they've classified as, as harmful for the environment and have been looking to, to ban, such as six-ring packs and other types of what are commonly referred to as single-use plastics. So I, I think there's some avenue there to, for the provincial and federal government to incorporate packaging-related regulations that will alter what we as consumers might buy off the shelf. And that could be part of what, what comes out of this policy direction in future.
Thank you for the answer. I'm going to go to Director McMahon.
Yes, so I had two sets of questions. One's, one's around the ICI and the other's around process. But on page 53 of our package, the, the report from the province identifies fairly well the challenges of rural and remote areas, but I did not see anything in the recommendation that actually addresses those challenges. And hence, I, I see a need for a letter. And so how does this work? Is, is staff going to draft something and then will it come to the directors for our review before it goes out? How is, what's the process here?
Yeah, through the chair, and thank you for the question. So if you refer to page, it would be 65 in the package, that is the, the draft letter that we've, we've put together to, to send back to the province?
Attachment would be on page 65.
My apologies, I entirely missed that. I'm just going to have stock quickly and read it.
I'm going to move on to Director Inkster.
Whatever we can do and/or support and/or get funding to support to get rid of hard plastics from our environment that are ending up in the oceans, we need to do.
Very good. I do not see any other questions. Do we have a? Oh, there we go. Director White.
We've, yeah, this has come to the Town of Gibson's too, so we've been working on trying to get our heads around it. We definitely support it. We happy that, that the province is looking at this, long-awaited, and appreciate that we and the SRD have been doing a lot of advocacy for this for years over different incarnations of boards and councils. One, one piece, though, that I, that I'm not making a connection to is the, the possibility of pickup, which is probably the biggest issue in Gibson's, of, of commercial pickup, curbside collection, or any kind of collection of residential, which thereby becomes commercial, I think is in, in the way that we look at it. And then delivering that pickup to our, our recycling depots is still a, a big obstacle that we'd like to see in Gibson's. We'd like to see that, that, that be, and, and we'd prefer that model, kind of a subscription-based model, to any, any government taking on, taking that on. And I don't know where that fits in with this whole conversation, and I haven't been able to pick it up from the material they've, they've given us. I don't know. I'm hoping staff might have some insights into that.
Yeah, go ahead, Manager Sol. I guess he, what the director's getting to is that private, private industry is doing recycling and they've been shut, shut out of our system.
Through the chair, and thank you for the question. Yeah, so, so that sort of specific level of detail is something we might expect to see in a further engagement from the province once they have decided on a policy direction to implement. So that's, that's probably where we're not seeing that in this engagement paper, because it is very much at a high level, where they're simply looking at guiding principles, targets, and they've proposed some policy directions from other jurisdictions that they could use as a starting point to work off of. I think, as you've alluded to, the, the challenge there about models with pickup from commercial and, and sort of something similar to what happens on the residential side, that's part of the reason why it has taken so long for the province to look at engaging on ICI recycling. The, the commercial garbage sector has many different businesses involved in there, and changing how that system works will obviously have ramifications for jobs and employment and, and all of these businesses across the province. So my understanding from talking to provincial staff in the past is that they're taking this very slow because of the potential business ramifications on the, on the waste hauling side there. So some sort of commercial pickup system that's similar to the recycling setup is a potential option that we, we may see come out of this through, say, like a stewardship program for commercial recycling. And I think that's sort of what the province is testing the waters on with this engagement paper, is what's the, the appetite for something like that, given that it will likely have some pretty significant business ramifications for waste haulers in BC.
Thank you. I believe Director Toth hasn't spoken on this subject yet.
Thank you, Chair. I fully support what's presented here. I fully support us sending, you know, the letter. Agree in principle with the content of it. I, I was hoping that Director White might expand a little bit more on how the town is looking at it, if they're participating in this engagement opportunity. If they aren't, is there an opportunity for us to refer this to the two municipalities for them to also contribute to the engagement opportunities?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I was, I was helping.
He asked me a question, but I need to go through you.
Okay, you can go ahead, Director White.
We, I think this went out to all local governments, that this very same request, it went directly to us, the same, the same request that went to, so it must be somewhere in the District of Seashell office somewhere. Yeah. But, but yeah, I'll just elaborate too on, on my concern. I think, I mean, I, I might be interested in adding the wording that, that the SRD support commercial collection of residential recycling for delivery to public depots, just so that's included in our response to them, so that, just to make sure that they look at that. So if I put forward this recommendation, I, I would add that. I'll, I'll do that, actually.
That's a, so the procedure is to, is to make an amendment to the letter?
No, what I'm going to do is I'm going to make the motion, make the recommendation with the addition and that the SRD voice our support for commercial collection of residential recycling for delivery to public depots.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to Director McMahon.
And there was a second.
Oh, we have a secondor on that. Okay, so it's on the floor. Director McMahon.
I was going to speak to something else, but I'm in favor of that motion because, yes, we need it.
All right, so I will, seeing no other hands up, I'm going to call the question on the motion that's on the floor, the amendment to the letter.
Agreed, that was, that was the recommendation.
The recommendation, gotcha.
But, but with that addition to it.
With that addition, yes, I get it. Okay.
In that case, I just wanted to note that the report from the province doesn't consider scale. Like, they, when they treat people as whether they're institutional or business, they, they treat, you know, Mum and Pop Coffee Shop the same as BC ferries. And so they don't have any consideration for either the, the scale of the customers or the size of the community. And I wonder if they had considered different rules or more relaxed rules for communities under a certain threshold, as they do for, you know, policing costs. Communities under 5,000 get a break. Is there, should they not consider, you know, a somewhat different regulatory environment for small and rural communities? And I'm just wondering if it's worth mentioning that, too.
I wonder if staff has any input on that?
Yeah, through the chair, and thank you for the, the comment and the feedback. Yeah, and in relation to all of the various stewardship programs that we deal with that are created from the recycling regulation, this issue is often referred to as accessibility standards. And particularly when it comes to rural communities, it's a big issue. So it is something that has been advocated for since the inception of the recycling regulation, and certainly something that we could incorporate further into the, the letter as well, referencing that, that, that be taken into consideration when coming up with a policy direction.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Well, in that case, perhaps a, a further amendment to the motion on the floor, that the letter indicate concerns, I just lost it completely, about the applicability of the regulations to, to remote, small, rural and remote communities. How's that? Sorry, rural and remote communities.
We have a secondor on that. Okay. Darren Inkster. Okay, Darren Inkster, you have a question?
I'll leave you first.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Just a couple of things. Clarification on the motion put forward by, by Director White in referencing outside sort, outside service providers, because it's just like a Seashell contracts to somebody. I'm wondering if you meant direct billing, that was just a question. And I'm, and just through you to Director White, and I'm glad to see the, an amendment to the motion put forward, because this is sort of tidying up that we're doing, that Director Man just, McMahon just did. But what I would like us to do going forward is instead of saying we have concerns, we ask for mechanisms to implement those changes rather than just concerns. Thanks.
Is everyone clear on what is being added to the letter? Okay. Are you? Okay. Would you read it back for us?
Thank you, Chair. And that the Sunshine Coast Regional District communicate support for commercial collection of residential recycling for delivery to public depots, and further that, the communication indicate concerns about the applicability of regulations to rural and remote communities.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Director Inkster, is that hand residual?
Well, I have two questions.
Oh, you have another question? Go ahead.
First of all, just clarification to Director White and what, whether we can, what does concerns mean? You know, what, we need to be more directive, that's how we make decisions. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't know about the, are you recognizing me or?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Well, I think that's what Director Inkster was waiting for. Yeah, I don't know about the directive piece. I, I think we're, we're at the stage of just kind of giving them direction, it sounds like, for their next, their next step on this. But, fair enough. But, but that's, I think the question more for me was about just models of, of collection, curbside collection of recycling. I think what would really be helpful in, in the Gibsons area, because we already have this depot model and a lot of people participated and, and support it and want to keep doing the, the drop-off at the depot, is being able to have an option for, the option for people to have private curbside collection, which would not be administered by the town, would not be administered by the SCRD. People can just privately, and this is, this is how collection in, in Area A works for garbage. They can privately have a relationship with a contractor to pick up their, their recycling, and that would then be eligible to be dropped off at, at our public depot, which it isn't right now, that's the hangup. But because of provincial regulations do not allow that. So it'd be a different model from Seashell. But, but we're not, and it doesn't preclude the model in Seashell either, though. I mean, that, that obviously, if that's working for Seashell, that's still good.
And I understand that the director from the town of Gibsons has an opportunity to create a different model for, for his municipality as well. So I'm looking at Director McMahon.
Yes, the problem is that if a commercial operator picks up residential recycling, then suddenly magically it becomes commercial recycling under the definition, and that's what needs to change. And then the other problem is just the scale of our businesses are really, really small, and it is not financially feasible for a lot of them to pay for a private recycling collection service, and there's no, there's no provision for that in the, in the regulations or to address the, the costs and complexities of trying to ship recycling outside of the recycle B.C. system. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Director McMahon. The, I've known a elderly fellow who ran a recycling business that was forced out of business because he could no longer support himself through the system when he was denied access. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? That passes. And we have, we're going to move on in our agenda?
That was just called as amendment.
Oh, that was, was that the amendment or was that the entire recommendation?
Amendmented motion.
All right, so we're going to go and vote, that was the amendment to the letter that was, to the motion that was passed, and now we're going to vote on the motion as it stands. Any discussion on that? No, I see none, I will call the question. All in favor? Very good, that passes. All right, so we finished with the, this portion of the agenda. We don't see any communications or any new business, so I'm going to go to the in-camera section of our agenda and exclude the public. That the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 91E and K of the Community Charter, the acquisitions disposition and expropriation of land or improvements and negotiations and related discussions respecting and the proposed provision of municipality, of municipal service. Okay, we have a, we have a motion, all in favor? Thank you. I'm going to ask that we go into camera now. I will look at the gallery, and there is no one in the gallery, so we're, we're good to go in camera.